I don't have my mics on.
Hello, yeah.
Gordy, could you please, no, turn me on, please.
There you go.
Thank you. Yeah, you did. Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna, it's officially starting at 6:05 PM. Before, looking for approval, I just need to do some amendments to the agenda. 3.4 is going to be added, which is, uh, just a quick update by our CAO regarding bylaw from last evening. And then 3.5 will be an update on administration budget from last night, correcting the issues around the council numbers that were changed, and then also changing the terminology in the solar callwood. So that'll be 3.5. So with the amended agenda, looking for a motion to approve? Moved by the mayor, we'll say mayor. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? No minutes to adopt, I don't believe, do we? No? Okay. So we'll skip over that. Old business, 3.1, general operating core budget review.
Mr. Chair, we're just gonna continue on with our budget discussions from last night. We will be providing you with updated copy of the budget summary, because we've had to make some changes to the administration budget, the finance budget, and the terminology for solar callwood. So those are coming at some point.
Great. Actually, might as well stay up there. 3.2, projects with funding sources revised. Is there any updates on that, that we need to address?
Uh, no, not at this time.
3.3, tangible ass, capital assets with funding sources revised?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Then I will go to 3.4, which is bylaw update. We'll go to the CAO.
So Mr. Chairman, I did approach bylaw, and I did approach the union about looking at being able to renegotiate scheduling of bylaw officers, and the union is open to it. We already have one version, but I'm gonna be working on another, so this is hopefully gonna go somewhere.
Excellent. Great. When, when would you suggest, should we just hold off for now, before we look at approving the bylaw budget, or when do you suggest that we bring that back to this committee?
Well, I think that in terms of getting a schedule that'll work, it's not gonna be done overnight. There's a fair amount of work to it. So it's one of those issues that maybe council can approve it, close to the end of the approval of all of these items, with some sort of proviso, in terms of if, if the requirements are not met to the satisfaction of council, that maybe in 2015, significant changes are made, something like that.
All right. Great. Thank you. Any questions regarding that, before we move on?
Yep.
Council Lukens?
I just have a question. So we primarily discussed last night, you know, the third bylaw officer and that sort of thing, but I have a couple of other questions with respect to the budget itself. May I ask that? Ask them? The bylaw budget.
I will defer to our CAO and Director of Finance. Would that be appropriate?
Yes, that's correct, because this is an open, allows plenty of discussion.
So I have more than one question.
Uh, so could you go to that tab? Could you remind us what tab that's?
Six. And I am on page, oh, Jesus, two of eight, in, in tab six. And I'd like to understand the explanation, the thousand dollars had been removed, as there was only 75 spent in 2013, and 250 in 2012, but the CAO said add it back in. I'm just trying to understand what this all means.
Um, yes, I am going by the requirements of bylaw, and I requested that it be reversed based on what the, what bylaw division requested originally.
But if they're not spending that much, why would we budget that much?
I think what one has to look at here is they're responsible for their budget. If they have some specific plans in the coming year, it is part of my responsibility to support them in that respect.
Okay. I'll trust you. Page four of eight. We purchased a additional vehicle for bylaw a year or so ago, and I believe the equipment that came with it, and we added some equipment, if we were to get new vehicles, would we not just transition that equipment off of that vehicle versus purchasing that sort of thing? And I also wanna ask about the radios. I do recall this, there was a one-time charge for these radios. Were those radios not purchased, and if so, why is that 2668 still in the budget?
Sorry, which, you're on page four of eight?
Four of eight, and I'm under general supplies, minor equipment. It says used to purchase special equipment for bylaw enforcement, such as cameras, equipment, rack, and vehicles, fire extinguishers, cones, et cetera. No more holidays for you.
So, in terms of the thousand dollars, I think that's just ongoing expenses from year to year. So this is not, you know, this is equipment that's put in the vehicles, it's either replaced, or it's something that's new that's put in the equipment, in, in the vehicle.
Okay, and what about the radios?
The radios, I believe this part of this is to do with... Sorry, I'm just looking for the radios.
It's right there under that, so in the same comments, underneath the equipment that we just talked about, it says note, have removed 3,000 from this budget, as the vehicle fixture should be paid from the vehicle maintenance budget, as opposed to general supplies. And the 2668 for radios was a one-time budget. But we purchased the radios, didn't we? Or they purchased, no?
But it's in this year's budget, that's why she's asking?
But there's a 3,000 going forward.
Yeah, so we're trying to understand what that 3,000 is.
I think this has got to do with, as you know, we're part of the Crest radio system, and it's the link between the bylaw officers and the RCMP, and there are constant changes to the small radios, and I think this is just going on ongoing annual expense.
I think there was something separate for that, but...
Do you wanna say something? Okay.
It doesn't say that in there, that that's part of the Crest thing. I just wanna make sure we're not continuing to pay the 2668, because I know it was in the budget last year as well.
I, I think the big thing here is, now that we're on a budget system that has an ability to track backwards, we'll be able to see historic records. So if the expenses are not as high as anticipated, there should be some reason to shift the money to other accounts within bylaw that may be over expended.
Okay. I, I just wanna make sure that they're for the right reasons, and we know what they are, because those, I, I do know, in talking to Kevin, that those have been purchased, so I don't know if anybody else has comments or not. Thank you.
So, since, since we're not gonna be approving this budget anyways, perhaps what we could do is just clarify that line item? And, Mr. CAO?
Certainly.
Great. Any other discussion regarding bylaw? Seeing none, I don't think we need a motion, so we will go to 3.5, which was administration, which is the revised numbers on council and the change in category with solar callwood. Yeah. Sorry, Rebecca, can you remember which tab we're at?
Administration is five, I believe.
Okay.
Okay. We've only made a couple of revisions to this budget. One was to put the mayor's salary back in. So I'm sure she'd like to be paid. Just a small glitch with that. We've also amended the description for the installation, solar installation charges and professional services in solar callwood. As well, we moved some debt out of this budget and into the finance budget. So you should have an amended administration budget in front of you now?
Yeah. Are there, are there any questions by committee regarding that? Oh, I'm sorry, Council Sullivan, then Day.
Thank you, through the chair. I was just wondering what debt we transferred out of admin and put into finance?
That was the debt for Bear Mountain. It was just an oversight. All of the financial related items have been moved into financial services, and that one was just missed.
Uh, Council Day?
Thank you. Just looking at the forecast for 2014, it's lower than 2013. I'm just wondering why that is? And 2015 is lower again.
The administration budget includes a solar callwood, and this program is ending in March of 2015, so we will see a decline in those costs.
But for council, sorry, I was looking at the total council. So I know we had amended the salaries, and...
Yeah, that's right.
Just the, just looking if we've amended the, the benefits stayed the same. The total is now, for 2014 forecast at 129,826 dollars, and the 2013 amount is 132,380.
And it's also declining in 2015?
Yeah.
Just a sec.
Yeah.
You were after, right, then? Well, benefits might change.
No, the benefits were the same. No.
But, but salary-wise, you're right, the salary rise, salary rise would go up 2% because it's tied to, it's tied to QP. No, it's tied to QP. Uh, well, but, but see that? See, these numbers though, those numbers shouldn't change. The council members should, should, but they're going down too. Do you guys see what we're talking about? Do you, do you see, do you see the issue that we're talking about?
So going down about 2,000. I'm sure there is a logical...
Fazing in the counselors.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We're planning on some reckoning.
Yeah, that's right. We're expecting, we're expecting counselors to fall off 2015.
Shrinky, shrinky council size just too...
Well, you start four in December, and then you add another one in January, and then another one in February, until you're...
Tenure, Jewish.
I get one, I get first pick, and there's only one name in it. Yeah, you're welcome. Well, at least you have a statue.
And then it jumps back up again for 2017.
Yeah, that's right, every year.
And then it goes down again for 2018. That's weird.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah.
Yep.
It looks like it has to do with your conferences, FCM, UBCM, and AVICC.
Sorry. It has to do with your training and conferences? In 2014, we have 25,000 dollars for FCM, UBCM, and AVICC, and it looks like one of those must be a one-year-only thing, and so it's removed from the budget.
But if you, if you look at the line salaries, the salaries go down.
Well, I thought you agreed to pay cut.
Yeah, the conferences are every, every year.
We may need to come back to this one, and bring it back. We might bring it back at another council meeting, 'cause it looks like you guys need to fine tune those a little bit. Excuse me. Yeah, suddenly, uh, yeah, uh, all right, moving on to new business. 4.1, engineering. Michael, do you know which tab you are? I'm sorry, are you Michael? I didn't ask you to, Council Cullington, I know she's wise, and wise beyond her years.
Well, that's a, that isn't, what that, that's, you say that about young people, wise beyond their years, don't you? It's not meant as an insult, it's for young people. No, yeah, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for Michael. Mike, it's, Michael's up.
So, a change you might have noticed in this budget is on the memberships, where there appears to be a big change in the budget, but this is all items that were budgeted elsewhere, brought together into one unit. So all of these things have been budgeted in past years. And the training has been increased. Now that we have a deputy engineer who's taken charge of training, we're actually going to get a lot more training done. As you can see, in the past performance of that budget, it's been a bit spotty, and we need a much more rigorous training schedule to make sure that people don't miss training that's vital for them to be able to perform in their capacity, such as we need regular training to upgrade for mapping purposes. And I think most of the other budgets are very little changed from previous years. And, uh, not very significant amounts. So I don't think I need to say more on that.
I will go to committee first, and then to the public. Committee? Any questions? Mayor Hamilton?
You, you mentioned memberships in the general expenses, but I don't see any, what line item in our first sort of summary page does that fall in?
Page, is page...
Page one of two?
Ten.
One of ten?
One of ten?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's there, but is not page one of two sort of a summary of, of things, or is that not?
What you mean, it would be included in their general expenses.
Okay.
Council Sullivan? Excuse me, Sullivan? I, I keep wanting to, you know where I wanna go with Harvey's, what I keep, Sullivan.
Ah, identity crisis continues. Thank you, through the chair. Chair? Yes. With respect to the coastline erosion study, we've got 75,000 dollars in 2014. I'm just wondering what it is we're studying, 'cause I thought we've already got provincial government studies on this. We've done four other previous studies. I just don't know what, what we're doing here.
Which page are we on?
We're on page two of two. Special projects, close to the bottom, one, two, three, fourth, up from the bottom. Coastline erosion study, 75,000.
Yeah, we've, we discussed that earlier under special projects, last meeting?
Yeah, I know, I forgot to ask.
Oh, okay. That was a decision to study the erosion around the pump station, to see what, how we can best protect the pump station?
Right.
And also get prices on studying the other infrastructure that's at risk?
Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Council Day?
Thanks. I'm just curious about, my line go, just had it two seconds ago. Oh, on page, goodness, it says one of two again, but it's the second one of two. It says emergency management auxiliary power, which I understand we've pushed out to 2015, for 175,000, that was the generator. But then underneath that, it doesn't have anything, but it says unallocated, so I just don't know what that means.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? That is just, it was set up to allow them to add another project in there, it should be hidden.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you do see unallocated, just ignore it.
Uh, any other?
Uh, I don't think I need to say it again, through the chair, just my concern over the vehicles, so I stated my opinion on that last night.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I will then go to the public. Public, is there any questions? Seeing none, I... Should we have a motion, I guess? This would be a motion to...
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, based on what we did last night.
Yeah, could you help me with the wording? Just how that motion should read?
How much is it worth to you?
I think, I can help you.
Uh, let's see here. It's worth a lot to engineering.
Use your mic, please.
Oh, yeah. Recommend to council that the engineering department budget be approved as presented.
Great. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a question. All those in favor? So, uh...
This feels very weird. Do we not need to have the motion include a recommendation that, to council, that the engineering budget be approved as presented?
Uh, yes, that's just what's been said, yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Uh, so all those in favor again? Sorry? Opposed, carried? Thank you. Moving on to 4.2, Public Works. Tab 11, I'm assuming?
Yep. The Public Works budget is actually down overall, compared to previous year, so that is, I think, a remarkable job by the Public Works personnel, and most of the budgets remain very close to the same as they were before. So there are no surprises in this one.
Okay. Council Logan, then Council Day?
And then, Cullington. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the Director of Engineering. So the branch drop-off would be included?
Yes.
In this budget. So it was a bit of an issue last budget cycle, about the staffing for the branch drop-off at overtime rates, and there was supposed to be some action taken throughout the year to rectify that situation, so I was wondering if, if that has taken place?
Mr. Chairman, a direction was given for Public Works to draft a report for it to come to council, but because of, um, other issues, the report didn't come forward, unfortunately. So the issue is still outstanding, that in the 2014 budget, branch drop-off is still as it was in 2013, by regular employees that are brought in at overtime rates.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. I guess, then, we, my preference would be to use the same mechanism that we use for, for municipal enforcement, and hold off approving, because that was the direction that we gave a year ago. That's, you know, fairly simple to, to rectify, I understand there's some suggestions, so, and it hasn't happened, and it's a large cost item. And the principle of paying overtime, you know, twice a month to run a predictable program, is, you know, is irritating. So I, to me, I'm not willing to, to approve this until we at least have that discussion, either with the union, and have some action taken actually on the subject.
Council Day?
Thank you, and I concur with Gordy's thoughts on the branch drop-off program. Very valuable program, but we wanna run it as cost-effectively as possible. Also, I have, um, concern with regards to, I, I know that staff have tried very hard to bring as lean a budget forward as possible, and in so doing, they took out of the budget the play structure for Callwood Creek Park, which has failed due to age, and does need to be replaced. And last night, I didn't speak up a lot about it, 'cause I, I didn't wanna, you know, I'm the chair of parks and racks... And last night, I didn't speak up a lot about it, because I, I didn't want to, you know, I'm the chair of parks and rock, and I didn't want to just be advocating for my particular area of interest, but after having thought about it overnight, I really feel that it's important, um, there's a lot of things that we have in our budget that, um, the residents won't really realize the benefit of for many years, but children have a very short time in which to enjoy the playgrounds and the equipment, and, um, as mine are getting older now, I'm realizing how short that time is. My kids, when I first was elected, were at Wishart School, they're now at University and College, so, um... Yours weren't born yet. So, I just think it's very, it, it's one of the things that I think is a small capital cost, it's $16,000, to replace that play structure and ensure that the children who come to Colwood Creek Park have the things they need. So, I would like to move that this item be added back into the budget and funded via the Capital Projects Reserve Fund.
So, we have a motion, did you want to, uh, did you want to say something to that motion? Okay.
Um, I completely concur with everything Councilor Day just said. I just noticed that it's actually under the parks budget, not under the Public Works budget, and I'm wondering if we should deal with it under that one. If you go to page one of, well, it's showing as one of one, but it's actually, uh, it's the, it's the second page under tab 12. It's there, so.
May I also, yeah, just before?
Oh, yeah.
Just before Councilor Day withdraws her motion perhaps? Uh, can I get, just, uh, I would like to look to our CIO or Director of Finance, just from an opinion, since this is actually core, and this is a one-time expense that, that was a special project that we dealt with yesterday, would that actually be appropriate to make that motion to put it into core?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think we should leave it where it should be, and that's under CTA, I believe, so that, um, an amendment could be made to the motion that was made last night to include the $16,000 and where the source of funding will come from.
Uh, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So, did you want to withdraw the initial motion, or did you?
Sure, um, just had...
Or should we vote on it, should it's more appropriate to vote on it and fail it, or what's, I don't know.
The correct method is to vote on it.
All right, well, I'll call the, I'll call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed, fails.
What?
For now.
Uh, sorry, uh, we're, actually, it's, I had promised Councilor Collington could ask a question, then we'll go to, you have one more as well.
Um, also appreciative of work done by Public Works to kind of stay lean and mean, at the same time, so, a question, um, in terms of the salaries and benefits, I noticed the salaries are going, um, down, albeit very slightly. Is, is that simply because we've got, are we reducing the number of people, or we just happen to have lower paid staff?
I can answer that. We had two people retire in this last year, and we also have two employees that have gone into long-term disability, so we no longer have to include their wages in the budget, but we also hired on two additional staff in Parks and Recreation, so you will see that it has gone down slightly, but full staff complement is provided for.
Okay, that's, that's good, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, as we're a growing city and as we grow the amount of, you know, the number of roads that we need to look after and all over the rest of it, that we're not trying to, to do more with less. I think we need to kind of, looking forward, we need to make sure that we are allowing our Public Works staff to, to grow as needed to, to cope with the additional infrastructure, that's all I wanted to say.
Uh, Councilor Luken's, excuse me?
Thank you, um, I don't have a question specific to this budget, but I did want to remind that we did say that we would build, bring the building department's budget back, and I see Mr. Pacula sitting in the audience, and I'm just wondering if that should be part of follow this before we go into parks or whatever, but I just want to make sure that that's addressed, because he was asked to bring back the list of the, because I was concerned about what his numbers was.
Okay, uh, we'll deal with that after.
Yep, sure.
Uh, Councilor Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just through you to the Director of Finance, I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to confirm it. The, uh, the interest on the Nob Hill intersection debt, it is contained in that figure that we spoke about last night, bank and interest charges?
And, no, actually, that will be included in the financial services budget.
Okay. I, I was hoping, because we're, it's, it's getting up there about 12 years old, that we'd be retiring it soon, so, it just sent my heart fluttering a little bit.
Uh, any other questions? Seeing none, I will go to the public, public? Seeing none, uh...
Yeah, I would move that we defer the Public Works budget until more information's provided on the branch drop-off. Is that, uh, specific enough, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, all right, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Uh, with permission of the committee, I would like to create a 3.6, as suggested by Councilor Luken's, and just go back to the administration department summary, is it, no, sorry.
Building.
Building, sorry, to, uh, building inspection department forecast. Do I need a specific motion to that, Chris, or is that okay, just to do it like that?
No, that's perfectly, I don't, okay.
All right, uh, Flo, would you like to step up and maybe walk us through it? Does everybody have a copy? Uh, was copies available for public? Oh, is this confidential, okay. Well, so, what can you say then in public?
You can say what you like, it's just that some of the information might be proprietary.
Okay. So, don't blow it, Flo.
Um, so I'm hoping that you've all had an opportunity to, um, to review some of the figures and on my projections for the projects that will be moving forward in, uh, in 2014, um, and I would invite any questions that you may have in general terms of the validity of some of the figures and the potential for them progressing, as I have indicated.
Councilor Luken's?
Thank you, I actually sat down with Flo today and went through this sheet line by line, and I can say that although last night I was concerned about his forecast for 2014 of 526, 136, I'm very comfortable with it. Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I don't know how much the public has, oh, sorry. Uh, public, did you have any specific questions? Seeing none, uh, did we need a motion at all for that one? Okay, then we will jump back to, thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, so I guess we do need a motion for building? What was the building?
That's correct, yep.
Building. Councilor Day?
Okay, I would recommend to council, uh, move that we recommend to council that the building inspection, um, budget be accepted as presented.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Uh, jumping back to 4.3, Parks and Recreation?
This, um, this budget also has undergone a small...
Tab 12, is it tab 12?
Yes.
Yeah. This budget also has undergone a small decrease and need to decrease it a bit more. You'll see the very first item, page one of seven, is salaries dam maintenance engineering, and, uh, the first four of those are not needed, that is engineering that's done every five years. So, we, uh, 2018, it would be the next time that we would need that. Yeah.
We only do this every five years, so, uh, we just take up those four years.
Yeah, has that, uh, I, I just, going through to our Director of Finance, with that change that the engineer, uh, city engineer has mentioned, has that been accounted for in, in core yet, or is that change going to occur? Hence, hence, the reason being, it was suggested that there's the $15,000 to pay for the playground. But I don't want it to say that if, if finance has already accounted for that change. Uh, under dam maintenance? Under dam maintenance?
Then, in the engineering budget?
Yeah, so it would be page, uh...
Parks.
One, one of seven, is it, one, I'm sorry, where's?
In, in parks.
In parks, yeah.
In parks, under tab 12, on page, um...
One.
So, just 2014?
Well, no, the, uh, our city engineer has suggested that that $15,000 can be removed up to 2018.
Yeah, that's on the assumption that this is for engineering consultants, which, because it says engineering. And I'm just not familiar with whether the dam maintenance is provided for elsewhere.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure why that's there.
Okay, so it hasn't been, it hasn't been taken out of budget yet then?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Logan, then Day?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, just a quick question to the Director of Engineering. We've added some infrastructure on Old Island Highway, landscaping and stuff, uh, so just want to make sure that we have adequate funding in there for the maintenance and the, um, annuals and stuff that we're going to be planting in the spring.
We did not receive the updated numbers from parks in time for this process, so we don't have those increases other than what council's already approved in the past. If, if I get, uh, increased numbers, I will examine them and maybe bring them to council before the budget process is completed.
Okay, so, I guess, um, would you advise that we hold off a little bit then on this until we get some sort of, uh, firmer figure on, on that?
Um, well, you still have a chance to change it at council meeting.
Yeah.
I think there should be, sorry, if I may?
Uh, Councilor Day?
Just, I think there should be something in the budget for the maintenance of the, of the new infrastructure, because that's, I mean, even if we don't have the right amount, let's, let's get something in there, even if it's $5,000.
Well, the Parks Foreman will be back, uh, from a course, he's been on a course since the holiday ended, unfortunately, but he will be back shortly, and then we can put those numbers in in time for council on Monday.
Okay, excellent. So, um, while I have the floor, then I'll move my motion, which is that the parks budget include, um, the $15,000 required for the Colwood Creek play structure to be funded via the Capital Projects Reserve Fund. Yeah, well, it says 15 in here, I thought it was 16 too. But it says 15. Well, let's put in 16, and if it's less, then we can amend it. Better to be on the high side than the low.
Uh, okay, we have that motion on the floor, discussion, Councilor Logan?
Uh, thank you, um, just wondering if that's, uh, that's enough, because that, those play structures are quite expensive and have something of some quality, you know, I'm wondering if, uh, we should look at something more substantial, because there's also installation costs too, I would believe, that would be included in that.
That estimate comes from the Parks Foreman for the item that he discussed at the Parks Committee.
Okay.
Uh, I'd go, actually, I'd go Mayor Hamilton, then Councilor Day?
Well, just in, in conversation following, uh, Councilor Logan, on page three of seven of the forecast, at the bottom, it says Parks and Playground, Minor Equipment, General Supplies, Parks and Playground, a $25,000 allocation, which follows through on the next page, but there is a notation saying not charging special project work to this account any longer. Do we have the $25,000 there, yes, or no, is that for equipment and what?
Well, that, that is just in their core, so the 16,000 would be in addition to 20, 25,000. I can't, I can't see.
It would be 16 plus 25?
Um, yes, but it would be divided, the 25,000 is for year-on-year requirements to make sure the playgrounds are kept up to standard. The 16,000 is a one-time installation cost of a new unit.
Yeah, okay.
Councilor Day?
Thank you, it does seem that that would be a fairly low number, only in that I was present for the replacement of the equipment at Herm Williams and also at Ocean View, and both of those installations were considerably higher. About half the cost is the actual equipment that goes in, and the other half of the cost is for the material underneath and all of the additional groundwork that goes into putting the structure in. So, I would certainly like to see us budget appropriately, I mean, if, if there's, um, thinking about it, it was a lot more. It was like $30,000 for Ocean View Park, and that was about 10 years ago, or eight years ago.
Well, again, I can verify those numbers before council.
Okay.
All right, uh, any other discussion, uh, on the, on the motion? I, I actually, uh, my comment is, I am not opposed to the playground at all, I'm actually very supportive of it, but I will not be voting in favor of it, because, uh, as we say, if we want to do the budget properly, we should take advice from our CIO, who's already suggested that this should be under special projects and not in the core. So, I won't be supporting it here. Yeah. This isn't special projects.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I believe if you look at the, sort of the backside of page one of one?
Yep.
Under tangible capital assets, um, if you remember, this was under our discussion last night, under tangible capital assets, playground equipment, Colwood Creek, we currently have it blank.
We're talking about putting it?
No, we're talking, we're talking about putting it here.
Okay, for putting it, if we're putting it in, are we putting, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this, the way this, the budget structured is, when we looked at tangible capital assets, we had them all listed, um, but they also then revert to whichever department that they fall under, and this one, if you look at the budget, it's under TCA, it's repeated again inside, so, quite frankly, it doesn't, doesn't really matter where it's approved, it will appear on the master list of total, total capital assets, and it'll also appear in the budget for the parks.
So, you're saying it's okay to vote for it in this?
Yes, yep.
Okay, then I will vote for it. I'm not against it.
Hey, later, Chris.
Uh, crisis averted. I've done, no, no, I've saved these from my CIO. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, carried.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, can I?
That was just that motion regarding, I'm sorry, the...
The 15,000, or 16,000, pardon me.
But there was, but the thing is, that there was some issue in terms of, is that an adequate amount of money?
Yeah, I believe the entire budget is coming back with more information when the Parks, um, Foreman returns, so if we need more information, uh, from him in regards to what the installation will cost, I'm assuming that that will be back to us by the time council is looking at this.
Uh, Director of Finance?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to draw your attention to the report prepared by the Public Parks and Recreation Foreman. This report came to the committee, and he estimated between 10 and 16,000 to remove the damage and replace with a new. And the motion at that meeting was that it go to council and be considered in the budget, which we are doing.
So, he has already stated that it's, they can get done by, for 16 grand. All right, uh, any other discussion regarding this budget? Okay, uh, oh, yes, sorry, Mayor? No, okay, going to the public then, public? Comments? Okay, uh, then looking for a motion regarding parks? Okay. Then, looking for a motion regarding parks? That was public.
So I would move that we... I would move that committee of the whole recommend to council that the parks operating budget be approved as presented.
All right, discussion?
Pardon me, as amended, yes.
As amended. Counselor Day?
Sorry, there's only one deficiency, and that is in regard to the Boulevard maintenance that we don't have the answer for yet. So I think we were planning to hold on. The only question is, do we hold on to it? Do we, we can just recommend we bring this forward to council, and then get that information and make an amendment at council? Or we could not approve it yet, but then, I'm just wondering where that leaves us with the process?
Counselor Lukens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would rather defer it, because then it doesn't fall off the slate, and we remember that it needs to be put in there. I guess what's surprising to me, if we've gone to a lot of time and detail to do all of that work along Ocean, or along Suk Road, and it just, to me, should automatically be part of our budget, that if we install it, we should maintain it. So this is baffling to me, but that's just me.
Counselor Day?
Sorry, I think they're just used to having to maintain the things that we put out there without budgeting anything extra. So I, I think that, you know, they, they do it so well.
Okay, we have a motion. Oh, Director Finance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out that the Boulevard budget, they have, over the past few years, had about $30,000 in the budget. I spent about 23. It does look like they have added approximately $4,000 to what they have been spending in the past. I don't know if that is sufficient for the Old Island Highway materials, flowers, bedding plants or not, but it does look like they have made a provision.
Thank you. So we have a motion, no, sorry, which what budget was that, that was been increased?
The Boulevard. It is...
Page 1 of 7.
Page 1 of 7. And then on the next page is his actual...
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to double check that that's it. I hope it is.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor, which is to forward this to council. Is the committee prepared to, no, it wasn't to defer. She, she had moved. We haven't voted yet. So I will call the question, unless there's any other discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed? So, okay, I'll say the motion one more time, sorry. The motion is to forward this to council for approval.
Subject to clarification from the...
No, there was no subject. So, those in favor? Opposed? So it fails. So may I have a secondary motion, please? Counselor Day?
I would move that it be forwarded to council for approval subject to clarification on a budget amount for maintenance of the new infrastructure on Suk Road.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, there is discussion. Counselor Lukens?
Just one last thing. Can we also make sure that that 27,000 includes Whale Road and all our other roads that we're actually covering off and have the monies allocated to do the beautification, et cetera, that our community would like to see? So can we make, just verify those numbers, including Suk and Whale and the boulevards?
City engineer?
This is the budget for the maintenance, and so it only covers what already exists. And there was an increase a year or two ago to cover the new stuff on Whale Road. So I know that's covered.
So then you won't complain when I complain to you it's not getting done?
Well, actually, I believe it did get done this year, because the, the people that that money was meant to pay for have actually arrived in public parks.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried? Oh, this one will go fast. Sewers?
RCMP?
Yeah, let's do the RCMP with permission of the committee, because I don't think, well, we might want the RCMP here, actually. We're, we're going to jump over 4.4 and go to 4.5, RCMP. I will invite Inspector? Thank you. I didn't, I wasn't sure if it's Inspector, Hapton, or?
He's now fully commissioned.
And I believe it's tab 14 then, that we're on? I just hold on three seconds. Is it?
Yeah, 14.
14, okay, yeah. Welcome.
Thank you. So I guess you'll have to be patient with me about the format for this. So I'm here to answer any questions that you specifically have. And we're looking at the core budget, and I can touch base on that quickly for you. Is that there's no significant changes or surprises in our core policing budget above and beyond our normal increase? And most of you, I believe, attended our presentation at the RCMP detachment, which explained some of the cost drivers and the increases to the RCMP policing costs. There's no extraordinary costs that we're anticipating on the horizon. There are two vehicles that will be changed over in this coming year, and those have already been budgeted for in your existing budget. That, that will incur the cost of the vehicle and the changeover of the fit-up of those vehicles, which has already been captured, as I said, in this current budget, because our budget cycle is somewhat separate from your cycle. The only other thing that is coming is the, what we call LiveScan or iBook, which is an electronic fingerprint system. And that will be a cost shared between all the municipalities that we police. And that is something that we're anticipating being able to absorb within the operating costs of the detachment. So our main, only difference in the budget is a request for an additional municipal employee funded by Callwood Municipality. I'll be making a presentation to both, to all three communities, View Royal, Callwood, and Langford, asking for a municipal employee from each of those communities. And if it's appropriate, I can explain a little bit of what the rationale is and why we...
Yeah, absolutely. We talked a little bit about it yesterday, but we're waiting for you.
Okay. And, and I'll, I'll basically go over a little bit of a business case for you. I'm hoping it's not redundant for you. If it is, let me know. But Callwood, as it's already been identified here today, is, Callwood is a growing community, as are all the communities policed by the Westshore Detachment. The demands made in regards to documentation and administrative duties involve the police investigation, and police investigations are onerous. This stems from the legally mandated obligation for full disclosure, as well as an increased awareness of public safety and corresponding need for the investigator to document their actions and conduct numerous indices and database checks. Further, with the introduction of Prime, there's an increased expectation of members adding to the documentation burden.
For the interpreter?
Just letting you know.
Wow. I can put in your place.
So anyway, there's an increase in the documentation burden as, as the need for management of electronic file system by support staff. As part of full disclosure, the courts expect a detailed and complete package to be presented to Crown Council and the court system. This typically involves transcribed statements, indices, checks, and full documentation. A typical file being processed for court will pass through the hands not only of the investigator, but the supervisor, watch clerk, prime coordinator, transcriber, exhibit custodian, court liaison worker, and CPIC clerk. The hard paper file will also have to be filled and handed by each of these people, and filed by the records worker in the file room. The original file may have passed through the front counter or a call taker when it was originally created. All of these positions, with the exception of the investigating member and his or her supervisor, are municipal employees, support staff at the Westshore Detachment. The Westshore Detachment has seen a large increase in individuals of the Westshore community attending the front counter of the detachment, not only to file complaints, ask questions, but for criminal records checks. These checks, in their simplest form, are handled by the front counter worker, who may receive in excess of 200 criminal record checks a month. Any checks that surface adverse information are then processed to a higher level, resulting in the file and check being moved to the disclosure clerk for more detailed review and processing. This also typically involves fingerprinting and a variety of database checks resulting in communication and information sharing with other detachments and municipal police departments. In addition to the criminal records checks, the disclosure clerk is fully engaged in dealing with disclosure requests for files and information, such as ATIP, which is Access and Freedom of Information and Police Information Checks. There have been substantial increases in ATIP and FOI requests from the public, lawyers, private, and government agencies. A full ATIP clerk is now required to manage these requests, together with the in-depth background checks required on some police information checks. In recent years, the requirement for individuals to obtain a police information check for employment or volunteer purposes has dramatically increased. Policy has changed, requiring significantly more research on police history, records being reviewed. Work previously performed off the side of a desk is now managed by a full-time employee, as well a major increase in client services being placed on the front counter staff. The requirement to fingerprint individuals who wish to gain employment or volunteer in positions involving vulnerable persons has grown substantially. This task is followed to the front counter staff with the assistance of the ATIP and records personnel. In addition to the ATIP disclosure clerk, the Westshore Detachment has experienced an increase in the request for information from the Ministry for Children and Families. This involves disclosure and background checks on family members and risk factors associated to individuals in their files. The Westshore RCMP is tasked with providing this information to them for a jurisdictional area, and the major crime clerk, along with a full-time member, are tasked with providing this timely and critical information. At times, the workload is beyond capacity and further support is required. In summary, the workload has increased dramatically at the Westshore for support staff. Prime, for example, in 2005, Prime, the Province of British Columbia legislated to utilize a police records information maintenance environment, which is Prime. The record system has resulted in increase in data entry to support significant statistical gathering, which impacts all municipal employees. Court documentation. Justin, which is the automated submission of court documents, charges forwarded to Crown Council, result in a workload increase for both the watch clerks and the court liaison officers, both of which are municipal employees. The system demands more information, requiring greater review to ensure accuracy and attention to detail. The system will automatically reject submissions with missing and inaccurate information. Transcribing. Initial request for approval of criminal charges has previously been accepted by Crown Council with a typed synopsis of a statement taken from the subjects involved. Once Crown Council determined that charges would be proceeded with, the statements would then be deemed necessary for court would be requested. And a provincial memorandum of agreement has been signed in 2012. That's an agreement between the Crown Council and all of the police agencies of B.C. and was mandated to the police agencies. This MOU requires all statements be typed in full, proofread, and included with the initial report to Crown Council prior to approval of any charge. These statements are required in a timely manner, and the transcription required has dramatically increased. Statements are now transcribed where charges are not proceeded with, or where a subject submits a guilty plea prior to the court date. So whether or not it is, we anticipate it is going to go forward if we submit it to Crown Council, we have to transcribe the statements. Just as a little bit of a side note, and Karen Rees is our office manager and can give us exact estimates, but approximately for every half hour of a taped statement takes about three hours to transcribe. So a significant amount of work has, has come as a result of that memorandum of understanding. In 2012, operations communications centers on Vancouver Island ceased to accept incoming calls of a non-emergent nature for detachments having 24-hour support staff coverage. Any CPIC input required was also added to the duties of detachment personnel, which fell to the Westshore Detachment. CPIC duties for the watch clerk has significantly increased, which includes narrative messaging, missing persons, stolen vehicles, and all of the additions that have to be added to it. Call-taking duties have fallen to the front counter clerk, which has substantially increased the number of daily files required to be opened while still attending to the clients at the front counter. And as I said, access to Freedom of Information requests have substantially increased. And I'll give you some of those numbers in a moment. The watch clerks themselves have been mandated by the Province of British Columbia that submissions of all files of regular members through Prime be managed on a 24-hour basis. At Westshore Detachment, the watch clerks are responsible for ensuring files are transcribed from the vehicles to the appropriate supervisor to ensure all police, policing requirements are met. It is mandatory that the watch clerk positions are staffed at all times and that coverage is provided for all vacations, bank, and sick leave. Westshore Detachment is open to the public for administrative requirements from 8:30 in the morning to 16:30 hours or 4:30 P.M. Monday to Friday. The Westshore Detachment has always prided itself on providing a high level of service to the community and citizens we serve. An example of this is the criminal records checks. These are vital to many who volunteer and coach in the community, the community youth, looking for, and looking for employment. Currently, the Westshore Detachment strives to have these completed and returned to the individuals within two weeks. Many detachments are struggling under this burden, and criminal record checks can take weeks to months to complete. This is one area, for example, which is in danger of seeing a decrease in service if insufficient resources, or if sufficient resources are not available to continue process and manage this high work capacity area. This will result in long delays impacting volunteers, employment opportunities, and other agency requests for information. Further, the ATIP disclosure requests are crucial. Both criminal records checks and disclosure issues have large impacts and effects on the citizens we serve. Errors or delays in these areas have the potential to put the public at risk, not to mention civil litigation challenges towards employees, the detachment, and the community as a whole. Transcription, file quality, and disclosure for court-related files are also significant. Delays in a fully detailed Crown Pack, Council package, which are mandated to include transcribed statements, can result in legal challenges and dismissal of charges. Any delay by the police or Crown Council is seen as prejudicial, detrimental to the accused by the courts, and meeting timelines and processing of information continues to be a challenge. Media pressures are also a relevant concern for the detachment and personnel. Not only are regular members tasked with providing media releases, updates, and answering numerous calls for information, but the municipal employees who work with these members is tasked with an ever-increasing demand for information, preparing literature and electronic information for release, and monitoring activities at the detachment for release to the media and public, which has not only an impact on the Westshore Detachment, but on the community as a whole, because that's our main method and a venue for getting our message out to the community and to the public. Just some of the stats. In 1994, all the public service workers were converted over to municipal employees, except for one position. At that time, Callwood had three municipal employees moved into their position. In 19, excuse me, in two, in the year 2000, Callwood saw an increase of one municipal employee and brought it up to four. And in 2005, Callwood had an increase of one municipal employee, which brought it up to five. We currently continue to exist at five municipal employees. And although there's been a population increase, a number of members have increased, the municipal employees have not increased. One caveat to that is that there is two, there are two shared positions within the detachment, which are funded by View Royal, Callwood, and Langford, and that's our IT land position and our prime coordinator. So there has been an increase, which is captured under the totals for the Langford numbers. I've got some census numbers in the report as well. But essentially, our file, our file load was peaking in approximately 2006, 2007. We, in 20, I don't have the exact number, but approximately 18,500 files is what we hit last year. Although our file count has, has come down, the obligations, the reporting requirements, and the reporting writing has increased dramatically for both members and for the municipal employees. So don't be, I guess, misguided by the sheer numbers of files, because the, the amount and the involvement of the documentation has increased dramatically, which has, has greatly impacted the detachment workload. Further, there's a number of issues that affect the Westshore Detachment. We have major highways, we have the hospital. But just dealing with the municipal employees themselves, for the disclosure requests for, that we receive, oops, sorry. Ministry for Children and Family Development will typically contact our office, and they're asking for information. We have to, we assign our municipal employee, who has to do a full, thorough research of all of our databases and the hard files to find out what an individual may have, have any contact with the police on. Ministry of Children and Families will often contact us about child placement issues, or if there's, or if they're involved in an investigation dealing with a file. In 2010, we were dealing with, on average, 227 files of those, those types of requests. In 2013, I'll give you 2012, we had 310. In 2013, as of beginning of December, we had 439. So it's almost doubled in three years. Non-MCFD requests, which involves requests by law firms, and requests by ICBC and other police agencies, we had 170 of those types of requests in 2010. In 2012, we had 402, and as of December of 2013, we had 555. So significant increases. And any one of those requests can bog down our ATIP and municipal employee for a day or more, just doing one of those requests. So what we've seen is, we've seen significant increases in, in the workload. As a result of that, what has happened is we've been utilizing two casual workers full-time. Those are people who are being funded, and ultimately, Callwood, as well as... Those are people who are being funded, and ultimately, Colwood, as well as View Royal and Langford are cost-sharing those casual positions. What they do, however, is that it doesn't allow us the long-term opportunity to plan for those people to be trained and for us to retain retention, because we can't guarantee them work. So through my, through my reports and presentations to all three councils, I'll be asking for three additional people, which will regularize two of those casual positions and actually see us only increasing one body in the detachment and one additional ME in total. That's why I'm here today, is to make that request.
Thank you. I will go to committee. Is there questions? Counselor Sullivan, and then Mayor Hamilton.
Thank you, through the chair. It sounds as though a lot of the increases in workload is a result of the provincial government introducing legislation and making it mandatory that you provide more information in a better format. Is that a safe assumption?
Yeah, there is, there definitely is, there's more legislation mandated requirements for us.
Okay, so I'm familiar with what provincial government ministries do when they're trying to cut costs, and they introduce chargebacks for services. And I'm just wondering if that's something that's been contemplated at Westshore RCMP, is whether or not we can charge back to the provincial government for providing these services?
At my level, no. And that would be a discussion, I suppose, for council and the province. There are, there are some discussions happening at the detachment as far as potentially some cost recovery for some of the services we provide to the community, which will present at a future date to council and to the Protective Services Committee for consideration. And that's for involving costs and recovery for some of the work along the lines of criminal record checks and some of the other information that we're asked to provide to the various agencies and groups.
Okay. Thank you. I just think it's something worth considering.
Mayor Hamilton?
Yes, just in the paperwork provided to us, I'm looking at page two of four, under the forecast of general expenses, on the item that says RCMP reader salary for $20,000. Reader salary definition?
That would be, if I'm not mistaken, that's our Prime Coordinator. It was originally what was termed as a reader, but it's, the title now is Prime Coordinator. That's a cost-shared position. So that's your share of that cost.
And then further to that was a $45,000 allocation towards relief workers RCMP.
And that I'm making, I will have to make an assumption, is your share of the casual employees that are utilized. So of the two casual employees that we have working full-time, Langford costs those back proportionately to the View Royal and to Colwood, and they pay their share. And what I should note is, my understanding is we have approximately six weeks of casual, true casual employees that we can use, but through discussions with Langford, what they've said is continue to use our casual employees, cost-share it back, and the savings are basically every year, because of shortages and vacancies on the, on the regular member side, that recovers some of those costs for the communities.
Counselor Day?
Get to my mic for paperwork. I just wanted to comment on the idea of the chargebacks, because a number of the criminal record checks that you do, and I know, I know they're ever-increasing, are done for the soccer coaches and other volunteers who are really helping to make our community a safer and better place. So I would be pretty reluctant to hear of chargebacks for them. I know that you have a fairly loose policy in terms of who you do charge for. I mean, people who are looking for criminal record check to help them with their employment, some people can afford to do that, and some people cannot, and I know that it's been managed, I think, quite well, for especially youth who are getting started. But I think it's really important that when we're talking about the chargebacks here, I think we're talking about putting it back to the provincial government in terms of, if they're going to mandate, you know, a very expensive system, and restorative justice is another area where this is a problem throughout the Capital Regional District, because they're saving money in the court system to do restorative justice at the expense of municipalities trying to foot the bill to help pay for all the paperwork that's required for that. So I just want to make sure that, I also happen to be the Chair of the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee, so I do hear from everyone in the region in terms of what's happening for families and youth, and I do really want to see that the government gets a clear picture of the costs that go with the requirements they legislate.
And just to clarify, as far as the cost for criminal record checks, no changes are imminent, and for us to implement any changes would be coming through council, and there would have to be a bylaw for that, and that would be further discussions and further research that has to happen.
Can you clarify, there are some people that do get charged for criminal record check, correct? And where does that income go?
It is...
Does it go back to the cities? Well, sorry, we're videotaping, so they, we need the mic so that...
I'm Karen Reese, I'm the Office Manager at Westshore RCMP. What we do is we identify where the person resides. If they reside in Colwood and they are charged the $50 fee, that money goes, is returned to the city of Colwood. We take it on a monthly basis to your finance.
Okay. If there's any other question, I just have a couple. Looking on the last page, page four of four, the last two items, the RCMP Annual Crime Prevention and Bike Patrol, and the Community Liaison Officer for Schools, no, excuse me, specifically for Community Liaison Officer for Schools, that looks like that just started in the last, this last year? Because it's, there was no...
I'll introduce my staff as they come up. This is Corporal Rocklick, she's in charge of our Community Policing Section.
Hello. My understanding was, is that we have usually, per year, received a check from, after putting in a letter to council requesting funds for community policing projects, community policing initiatives, Bike Patrol, and last year, it was my understanding that you decided to put it in as a line item into your budget, so that it would just be an automatic cost item for us, so that we could plan and allocate those funds as needed.
So it was a grant request, as far as you recall before that?
Yeah, it had historically been a grant request, and you had decided to change it in the format.
Okay, got, okay, that makes sense. That's why I was wondering why it just suddenly showed up. The other question, just a general question I have, is you talking about going from a tape recorder to transcribing? Is there, is there any legislation or anything around, like, using technology to transcribe versus, like, for example, DragonSpeak or other programs that are out there versus using staff to translate?
No.
Or transcribe, excuse me?
I think there's lots of, lots of attempts, but the reality is, when we're dealing with individuals, and the quality of those tapes are usually fairly poor, we're often dealing with people in high states of emotion, crying, and it's, and that's why it takes for a half hour, three hours to transcribe it, because it's back and forth trying to decipher what is they actually saying on that tape.
Okay, well, so it's not the officer just recording notes, it's actually, okay, got it. That's all my questions. Any other committee questions? Seeing none, I'll go to the public. Public? Seeing none? Oh, yeah, motion?
Yep, motion, Mr. Chair. I'm assuming we need two motions, Chris, one for the additional municipal employee and the other approving the RCMP budget, is that correct?
I think that would be a good way to do it.
So the first one will be that we recommend to council, the funding for one additional municipal employee.
So that's a recommendation to council?
A recommendation, council.
Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Second motion, Counselor Logan?
Then I move that we recommend to council the approval of the RCMP 2014 budget.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? I think maybe what we'll do is just keep going. Oh, no, I guess it's just finance fiscal and sewers. So what's the pleasure of this group? Would they rather go back to sewers? No? Okay. Could you please stay? Okay. Kidding. 4.4 Sewers, Director of Finance. Actually, does this committee need a break at all? Okay, actually, we'll take a five-minute recess.
That was a lot of... Two.
See, he doesn't listen. He doesn't even listen.
Yeah, but we're hoping to keep him for a while. Don't jinx him. Build that file, though. Yeah, I get you.
We need to move Dwayne up to the front row.
Yeah, Dwayne, we're going to make sure that there's a chair in between him and Teresa, that we know that there's the two of them. I told Dwayne that he needs to be the one to remove. If he has to be removed, he has to be removed.
4.4 Sewers, Director of Finance, want to talk about it?
Oh, sorry, no, you don't get to go yet. Where are you going? Oh, I thought he was, oh, he's moving to the board. Uh-oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We staff have presented to you two options for the sewer funds, similar to what we did last year. We have received a legal opinion that prevents us from following a motion from council of last year. So Staff Option 1 is proposing that we collect the sewer fee from the CRD debt via sewer user fee and property value tax on the balance. Last year, we, we collected the CRD in this manner. We're providing Option 2, which proposes to collect the $426,000 in CRD debt via a property value tax only. The user fee last year, in order for us to be able to collect the CRD debt practically double, from $1.005 per 1,000 cubic meter of water consumption to $2. If we were to follow Option 1, we anticipate that the sewer user fee rate for Tier 1 users would have to increase to about $2.61 cents per 1,000 cubic meters. The other option, too, is proposing that through a property value tax, the debt would be spread amongst all residents in the community. And one thing that should be pointed out is that our big three users, which are WSBR, Royal Road University, and Department of National Defense, whether they are charged via the user fee or the pilt, they will pay their respective share of the CRD debt, because the rate that we calculate for, the calculation for the pilt takes into account the other authorities that we have to collect on their behalf. So I would leave those with a committee for discussion.
May, just before you do, and normally, I wouldn't, I'd let committees, but I want to clarify a statement that you just made. So for example, DND right now pays pilt plus the sewer charge.
Yes, they do. They pay the user fee for their water consumption, plus they pay annual pilt of about $2.7 million.
Okay. Yes, City Engineer?
Which has nothing to do with sewer debt, the pilt they pay currently.
Right, and that's why I interrupted, because I wanted to clarify, because I thought I had heard through our Director of Finance that, one way or another, either through pilt or a user fee, that DND will pay for their share of the CRD cost. That's what, and that's what I want to clarify.
Pilt is voluntary. There's nobody making them pay it.
Okay, so that's important for committee to understand.
But they do pay for the CRD debt via the pilt rate that we apply to the properties.
Thank you. Actually, Rebecca, you may want to take the mic, because I'm sure committee's gonna... Oh, maybe nobody has any questions. So I'm sorry, what tab are we on?
We are tab 13.
Tab 13. Thank you. And you're finished with your comments?
Yeah, we basically have provided you with the two options, and we've also provided you with some mock-ups of what a tax notice would look like under both scenarios, as well as providing you with the invoices for 2012 and 2013 for our big three, our super users.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions? Counselor Day?
Just a clarification on what you said about the pilt, because we've been receiving pilt from DND since before there was any sewer debt, and that pilt has not increased to pay for the sewer debt, nor will it decrease when the sewer debt is paid off, as far as I understand.
The rate that we calculate for, it's like a tax rate, essentially, similar to how we determine the tax rate for the residential, is that it does include all costs. So CRD requisition, including the debt, BC Transit, all of those authorities that we collect on their behalf, and it's supposed to also include the municipal portion for the services that we provide on those properties.
Okay, but it doesn't, when the sewer debt is paid off, the pilt will not be reduced,
The sewer debt itself is a municipal debt. The CRD debt is part of the CRD requisition, so it's different. So when the municipal debt is paid off, the parcel taxes will decrease, but, but they don't pay that portion, they pay the CRD portion. If that, does that make sense? There's city debt, and there's regional debt. They pay toward the regional debt, not the city debt.
Yeah, I understand that, but I don't, I don't, in my time here, I've certainly seen the pilt challenged, and, you know, we've gone through numerous assessment challenge processes, but the pilt has never gone up or down based on a debt, CRD, or municipal.
Well, it would go up with the CRD debt was new last year, so their pilt would have increased for their share of the 40% that was a property value tax last year.
So, just, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna use some terms just to clarify, because I would like all of us just to be on the same page, if that's all right. User fee. The user fee that we are charging presently is to pay for CRD debt, correct? No, paid for, so it's the opposite. So user fee is paying for city debt?
No. The parcel tax...
Oh, geez.
The parcel tax actually is what pays for the city's sewer debt. The user fee is to cover the cost of operating sewer system in the city of Colwood.
So operation, so, so, yeah, I'm just, and I want all of us to all be on the same page. So the user fee covers operation costs of the sewers?
Last year, we included $126,000 in the user fee, which was part of the CRD debt. The balance was collected via a property value tax.
Right, so, so, okay, which is fine. So I'm just clarifying, user fee was operational sewer costs plus 60% of the CRD cost, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the municipal tax was to pay for the 40% of CRD sewers? No?
No, the, uh, 40, the, if you see the, um, tax notice in front of you, at the very top of the notice, there is a line that says, um, CR, uh, residential CRD. Last year, that 40% was included in that line, not in the municipal portion at the bottom.
I'm sorry, I don't see that line.
Okay, so the user fee, just trying to clarify, user fee was operational sewer costs, which was calculated on water usage?
Yes, and the unit.
And then, the whole 100% of CRD, and we divided it 60/40, depending if you were hooked to sewers or not hooked to sewers. I'm trying to, I'm, where I'm going with this is, I'm trying to make sure that I understand the fee versus the tax, right, because, from last year's. Okay. Oh, yeah, Mike?
What, what you have is CRD debt, which is regional.
Okay.
And that's for the building of the treatment plant, all right? You also have a fee that covers the operating cost of that unit.
Of the CRD?
Of the CRD. But also, on the municipal side, you have the, um, capital cost, which is the building of the sewer, which was done through a parcel tax, and then on that, top of that, you also have a user fee for the day-to-day operation. So, you have an equivalent on both sides. One's regional, one's municipal. Yep. Fee, correct. That's it.
Capital tax, operation fee. Okay, so the operat- So, so, okay, so I've got three columns. Help me here. Uh, I've got three columns. CRD, cost, which is capital, operational, which is, hopefully, and then municipal, capital, right, because that's the sewer pipes we're putting into the ground, correct? And a fourth? And a municipal operational. Okay. Okay, so I've got four columns. No, that's not correct? So, I'm, I'm trying, so, okay, so I've got CRD capital costs.
For sewage treatment?
For sewage treatment.
Yeah.
There is currently no operating because it isn't built yet.
Right, right, so it's, I've just got capital for CRD.
The CIO was referring to the operating cost of the sewer main, which is CRD. So, there's a CRD operating cost.
There's a fifth column. Okay, uh, okay, CRD capital, correct? CRD operational? Ah, that's, bear with me. CRD operational, correct?
Yep.
Municipal capital?
Yep.
Municipal operational?
Yep.
And, what was the fifth one?
Trunk. Operational.
Trunk operational?
Well, we already had CRD operational.
So, it's only the four columns?
Okay.
Okay, so I got the four columns now. CRD capital, CRD operational, municipal capital, municipal operational.
Can I just clarify something?
Uh, I'm not done.
The operational?
Yeah.
Is that the current, like, is that the current?
That's the trunk.
Yeah, yeah. So, CRD capital. What, what, yeah, what's user fee, municipal tax, right now? What's that being paid by?
In 2013, it was a mixture, yeah.
Okay.
It was 60% of user fee.
Both, okay, that's fine. CRD operational, there isn't any?
Yes, there is.
There is, okay, 'cause it includes trunk, and who's paying for that? Uh, what's, or where is it listed tax-wise?
I believe that's included in the user fee, is it, uh, Rebecca?
Uh, the user, uh, sorry, the trunk cost, operating cost are a tax.
They're, okay, they're a tax. The municipal capital costs are a tax.
Parcel tax.
Parcel tax, yeah. And municipal operational?
Is, uh, the sewer budget that we're talking about, so that's a tax. That's already goes as a fee.
That's a fee.
The user fee.
That's a user fee.
So, it's in the 60s.
Okay. All right. I think I got it. Does everybody got it? Does that all make sense? Does everybody get it?
Can I just clarify? So, before we, before we had the CRD, the bottom point, et cetera, system, we had our municipal system with the capital paid under parcel tax, operation paid under user fee, and there's also a CRD portion of that, um, the operation... Operation of CRD trunk is paid...
By tax.
By tax.
Yep.
Parcel tax, everybody tax?
Everybody.
Everybody tax, okay. And then there is, we've paid off the capital for the trunk?
Yeah, that was paid off.
Okay. So, we don't, that's no longer...
Can I just clarify on that, the CRD operational that's paid by tax is under the, last year was under the 60/40 split, because it's part of the CRD requisition?
The, the CRD capital was under 60/40, yeah.
CRD capital, CRD operating was also from, under the 60/40 split?
I don't believe so.
No, the only thing that was 60/40 split was the $211,518 debt payment to the CRD. So, about $126,000 of that was paid by the sewer user fee, and the balance was a CRD property value tax under that top part.
Okay. But it was charged to all, uh, Colwood residents, the sewer operating costs under the CRD requisition?
Yes, every, every home pays for, uh, the CRD requisition.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good. Uh, so, uh, we have two options that our Director of Finance has suggested, correct?
Yes.
Which were?
Uh, the first one, option one, is that we, uh, collect the $426,000, similar to how we did it last year. This will require our user fee for tier one to go up to about $2.61 per thousand cubic meters from the dollar five it was in 2012. Option two is strictly a property value-based tax on the whole city, similar to how we treat the CRD requisition right now. Um, we would just include the $426,000 in that calculation, and then everybody pays.
And may I also clarify one other thing? So, there is a user fee based on water usage, correct? There is a bill that shows up in June at one point, which basis is you get charged an X amount. Now, has that been moved over now onto the, the annual bill? 'Cause it used to be charged differently. So, I'm trying to understand if there's two user, if there's one user fee based on usage that pays for, for example, in the old LSAs or LAASs, it was based on volume, and you got charged on that?
You're, you're right. For a number of years, the user fee was charged separately. It came, some, sometimes it came as late as November.
Right.
In a separate bill, um, but I believe that this paper in front of us is telling us it's now charged on the tax notice.
So, there'll only be, I, and that's what I wanna clarify, there's only be one user fee charged now, not two. There won't be one on the bill and then one that shows up in June?
It's only charged once and included on the tax notice.
Uh, okay, uh, sorry, so the first, the first, uh, option was, uh, the $426,000 be charged to the user fee, uh, added to the user fee, uh, and the second option was to charge it to all property taxes. Discussion? Uh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just, I would like to suggest that, uh, option one is the most consistent way to, to handle it. I wouldn't like to see, uh, big changes every year in how we charge for sewers. I think we need to stick with one consistent method, and I think that reflects the wishes of the community when we went out and, uh, and sought their input as well.
Uh, Counselor Sullivan? And, I'm sorry, just, I, I don't mean to interrupt. Before, eh, no, no, eh, you're gonna get to comment, is honest. I, I would just recommend or encourage, remember not to make a motion at all until we allow the public to comment, so sometimes we, we might get heated and then make a motion. And then poor Dwayne didn't get a chance to say his two bits. So, sorry, go ahead, yeah.
Thank you. I, I, I think it's really important for us to be consistent with what we did last year, so I'm gonna be supporting option number one.
Uh, Counselor Lukens?
Yeah, thank you.
And Counselor Cullington?
I, I have a question, and this is to do with the document, um, confidential document that you provided us, option one and option two. I just have to ask, on option number two, why is the, um, sewer user fee, which would be the municipal fee, so high compared to option one? So, the bottom, it says, on the bottom of the page for option two, it says sewer user fee, and there's a number there, starts with a six, and then...
Oh, but it's, it's up there too, though, on, on the first one.
Oh, Jesus, excuse me.
We separated out the CRD component of it.
I got it, and you know what? I missed, um, on the front page, I missed the, um, on the bottom, there's a highlight, just above that is another fee, and I'm sorry, I, I missed that. I was panicking a little bit. I'm good, thank you.
Uh, sorry, Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. Um, I'm also going to be supporting option one, but I think there's a, there's a kind of a few pieces that we need to make really clear here. One is that, that we're only, you know, with all of those different pieces that you outlined, we're only talking about how to charge the piece that's related to the CRD core area liquid waste management plan. All of the rest of it remains the same. We're not even talking about that. Um, I think it's important that we make it clear to our public that that amount that we're being charged by the CRD, Colwood has already taken steps to keep that. I know it's a big number, but we've already taken steps to keep it as small as we can, because we tried to really, uh, work with the CRD to, to absolutely kind of minimize the amount of capacity they allocated to Colwood in that downtown plant. Um, I think it also, we, when we send out the tax notices, we might need to make it really clear that that big hit fee is coming from the CRD, it's not coming from Colwood. Um, and I think it also is important that we be really clear that we are working as a city to do our own wastewater treatment plant and to avoid paying the cost through the CRD, um, because we feel it's a much more economical and appropriate, uh, route for our, our residents. Um, my reason for supporting option one is that we went through a very extensive consultation process last year. We laid out all the options on the table. I think we were really clear to people that it was a big cost, it was gonna get bigger, um, and that we needed to find the least unfair way of charging it, um, and we tried to, um, find that balance between sticking to the principle that only sewer users pay for sewer fees, um, but in this case, recognizing that there are impacts both on sewer users, um, but also on the, the community as a whole, because really what we're paying a lot for is that future capacity, um, and, and how, well, how, how is the reasonable way of charging for that, and that's the piece that we said needs to be paid by the community as, as a whole. So, I think for myself, we heard from our public, they said, "This is the way we want you to charge it," um, and I think we should stick to that. I think it's probably also worth sending out a message when we send this out, reminding people that, um, the sewer user fee is linked to water use, so one of the ways that they can help to keep that bill down is to reduce their water use. Um, so, you know, am I happy to see this amount going up? No. Um, but we have to pay it somewhere or another, um, and my sense, strong sense is, is that option one is still the least unfair, um, option that we have in front of us, so that's where I'm going.
Uh, Counselor Logan had a question?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and for all the reasons that Counselor Cullington just expressed, I, I do obviously support option one, but thinking out loud, and, and I, I don't know how much impact this would have, but, uh, with going with option one, thinking long-term, are we shooting ourselves in the foot, uh, by, um, pricing ourselves out of the market when we're looking at the develop, the developable land, that we're hoping to kind of sustain our taxes and keep our taxes at a reasonable level by jacking up their sewer fees, uh, sewer taxes to a level that makes it unattractive to develop? And therefore, long-term, may in the end actually cost the taxpayer. And, and I don't know how true or how accurate that would be, but it's just something that I have thought of as a, a potential impact. So, short-term taxpayer wins that are, you know, on septic fields, but long-term, is there an impact by pricing ourselves out? So, I, I throw that out there. I don't know if Rebecca or, or Michael or Chris would have, um, uh, an opinion on that, one way or another, but, uh, you know, it's just something I've wondered, so.
Uh, okay, uh, sure, uh, City Engineer, seems like, would like to comment on that?
I, I've got a concern that the cost of sewage treatment in general is gonna, uh, price the seven municipalities, uh, out of the market, so to speak, and probably will suffer the worst. The, there's every reason to believe that the eventual cost of sewage treatment will be about a thousand dollars per household. That's per connected household, but even if you take that and spread that across everybody, it's still a lot of money. And, uh, I, I think that, uh, that difference in taxation between us and the other areas, uh, such as Sook or Central Sanage or, uh, Cowichon Valley, where they're not paying that kind of tax, will make a difference to development.
Uh, Counselor Lukens?
Thank you through the Chair. I will be supporting option two, as I did one year ago when, um, this came to us. From a philosophical perspective, this is a regional debt. Um, I believe the entire region should be paying for it. Either way that we go here, it's not going to be fair, and either way, we're gonna have people that are really upset at us, so there's no way that we can win here. The fact is, the only way we can win is to make a decision, and people know what we're going to do. I do believe that, um, there is somewhat of a future for Colwood when it comes to development and dealing with sewers. We do have a sewer master plan that has been completed that will not sit on the shelves. I do understand from the engineer that once we know what we're going to be doing with the sewage treatment, um, then we can start to work on a plan for Colwood and what that's going to look like, and we can move forward that. I don't know how long that will take. It won't happen over the next couple of months, but, you know, just for the general public to know that, you know, I, I think everybody sitting at this table wants to see something happen in a positive manner and not have spent that money gone out the window. But, um, I will be supporting option two, and the reason is, is because I believe it's a regional debt, and any debt we incur in our municipality, um, I don't think we should be isolating it to specific people, so that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments? Uh, Mayor Hamilton?
Yeah, I, I've been involved with council when we sat through those brutal days of, of sewer, um, discord and, and the, uh, litigations and whatever, and, and last year, we had undertaken a different way of, of doing our, our allocation for this particular component of the CRD. As Counselor Cullington said, it was extensive consultation around that. We, last year was the first year we, as I recall, we did not have any... We, last year was the first year, we, as I recall, we did not have any challenge in regards to taxation with sewer. So for me, that was a welcome relief on things. I'm loathe to change it at this point when we have so many so-called irons in the fire, if you will. There remains conversations at CRD, Counselor Cullington and I both working towards a more reasonable solution. So at this point in time, I'm, you know, ideally, you know, I agree that we should be, you know, if we had a plan in place and everybody was being hooked up and we could see that momentum happening, that might be a time and opportunity to equalize the payment process out there. But right now, we have a large contingency of folks who pay for it that will not see service coming forward, and we wanna work to engage and put them together so that we can make it more fair across the community, so I'm looking for option number one.
Okay. Does anybody else, oh, Counselor Day?
Sorry, just a question. We heard from Rebecca, but Michael's report was on the agenda as well, and Michael never actually did speak to his report. I don't know if that was just an oversight, or...
Do you have anything to add?
I feel completely left out.
First, I'm not gonna say anything. I've been told that I don't have proper decorum, so I'm gonna behave myself.
Feel better.
I'm not gonna say anything.
Would you like to speak to the report?
Would you like to?
I'd be happy to speak to the report.
All right, feel free.
It seems a waste writing it, otherwise. So the first page of the report just tells you what happened previously and gives the previous motion, and the second page gives some idea at the top about how the decision was arrived at, the public consultation process. But for those who want to delve into the public consultation process further, attachment one is the Colwood connection, which in September 2012 was completely devoted to the question of how much capacity should we obtain and how should we pay for it? And the fact that the entire Colwood connection was devoted to it gives some idea of the size of, you know, the public attention that that question occupied at the time. Attachment two is a report to Finance and Admin on this whole issue of the sewage treatment and how it should be paid for, and it was actually at the Finance and Admin Committee meeting on December 10, 2012, that I gave a verbal response to what the results of that survey was, and that's the second paragraph on page five of the minutes, so it's attachment three. And it says there that the people who said users only should pay were almost entirely people on septic fields, except for three or four. The people who said that the entire community should pay were people that were on sewer. But the hybrid option, which is the option that was developed, had more votes than either of the other two options, and was a better mix of sewer users and septic users. So there were, there was a somewhat more equal number of both that voted for the hybrid option, and although that wasn't the majority of the total, it was the biggest of the three numbers. So you don't have a majority vote there, because there were three options. And I deal with what we've already talked about, that the parcel tax was desired at the time but is not feasible now. A year ago, we postponed the, or council postponed the parcel tax because there wasn't time to prepare the development unit numbers for all of those properties, 5,000 properties. That has now been done, it's 99% complete, but there isn't time now to move on to the CRD, but one big step is out the way if we ever wanna go that way, but we're not there yet. And I set out on page three of the report, some of the factors that should be considered in making this decision, as far as I could come up with them, and I just wanna correct one of the statements there, which is that DND, Royal Roads, and West Shore Park and Recs do not pay taxes, but they do pay fees. It's a little more complicated and nebulous than that, and this has been discussed. DND and Royal Roads pay pilt, I believe, and pilt is, I believe, optional, and we appeal it regularly because we don't believe it's enough, and I presume sometimes we win and sometimes we lose. So it's a little difficult to say exactly what would happen with pilt, but as far as I'm aware, West Shore Park and Rec does not pay pilt, and therefore would pay nothing towards the debt if they were, if it was all paid by tax. And I don't know what the effect of that is on the final numbers, I'm just stating, you know, what I do know. And I've tried to deal in number six there in the factors with who are the winners and losers, you know, depending on which way you do it. And the recommendations in this report are that the existing users of the municipal sewer system be charged for both the capital cost and the maintenance cost of the capacity which they will use in any sewage treatment system used by the city as a fee calculated on the same basis as sewer fees, and that the capital cost of any capacity purchased or otherwise paid for by the city in any sewage treatment system, so whether it's CRD or not, any, for the use of the users yet to be connected to the municipal sewer system, for which the CRD requisition must be remitted in 2014, be charged as an assessed value tax on the entire city, and that the capital cost of any capacity purchased or otherwise paid for, yada, yada, in 2015 and beyond, be charged as a parcel tax. As has been discussed here, that would be dependent on CRD agreeing to that and passing the appropriate bylaws. And the fourth recommendation really has already been fulfilled here tonight, which was the staff be instructed to present mock-ups of the tax and fee billing for 2014. I believe that that fulfills that requirement. So that is the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll go. I don't think I'm gonna change anybody's mind, so I'm just saying this for my own benefit and make myself feel better. I think actually, Michael made a good point about the fees for Royal Roads, West Shore Park and Rec, and DND, because if we don't go to some sort of fee basis, then that means they wouldn't pay anything, it sounds like, correct? Possibly? So, I mean, that's an issue, and we would need to address that. Saying that, I have struggled with this because I fundamentally disagree with the majority of this council that this is not a community debt. I believe it is. I believe it's just like a road, it's just like Triangle Mountain and lawsuits, we're not charging specific neighborhoods for things, we do stuff as a community, and that's why we incorporate it, and that's why we are Colwood. It's because we cost-share debt. And the fact of the matter is, CRD was moving forward with or without us, and we would be charged something anyways, no matter what. And I think the argument that only people who are hooked into sewers should be paying the majority of it, I just, I don't buy that. I don't agree with that concept whatsoever. Also, the issues we're running into, and I think we need to go with our eyes wide open, that this is the first step to these costs, this isn't the end, right? This is, we're looking at 100% increase this year, and then we're looking at significant increases the following years, and to do what option one is, is just postponing a disaster because you're gonna hear in a minute from public, for example, the DND. 2012, they paid $142,000 for the sewers, last year, they paid $230,000, they're gonna be multiplying that by another double that. And in addition to that, they're paying pelt, and I think the argument's gonna be that they're gonna reduce pelt significantly on us because we're charging so much to them that what happens is, yeah, that's great, we haven't changed anything, but now we've lost a half a million dollars off of pelt, which means taxpayers have to somehow find and figure that out, and how do we do that? Are we gonna just charge the users on that? Are we gonna charge the entire community? I mean, we have to address that issue. Same thing with West Shore Park and Rec. In 2010, West Shore Park and Rec was charged $103,000 by Colwood. If they were hooked into the sewers at View Royal, they would've been charged $46,000. If they were hooked into Langford, they would've been charged $9,700. So basically, we're charging them 10 times the amount, and the reason we're charging them 10 times the amount is because Langford has chosen that they're cost-sharing across the entire community rather than subjectively picking and choosing who to charge. And, you know, I think this has been flawed from the beginning, and I think as we move forward, we're just getting ourselves into more and more and more trouble, that this isn't the year, that, you know, it's fine to pass it this year, but that doesn't address the issue long-term. And long-term, we're gonna be in deeper and deeper and deeper trouble if we don't get a hold of this, and at some point, this council's gonna have to make a hard decision about how to pay for this. And this is just postponing it, I'm afraid, because realistically, you cannot continue, we're gonna end up with sewer debt on sewer users in Colwood that is higher than their municipal tax. And how can you justify that? When you have other people in the municipality paying minuscule's amount in comparison? You're gonna create a have and have-not in your own community, and it's, I don't think it's a strong, it doesn't have a lot of foresight. Saying that, that's all I got, that's all I'm ranting at, it'd be my next election campaign rant, which I'll win all the sewer people on and lose all the non-sewer people on. Any other comments before I go to public? Seeing none, I will go to public.
Fundamentally, I'll disagree with everything the chair said.
What?
So, as we all know, I have disrespect for taxation against me for something I don't receive, but I'm not gonna try and refight that battle tonight, we have November coming up, that'll work then. Now, option one apparently minimized the effect of taxation on my property, being an environmentally-friendly septic tank user. And if that's the procedure we need to do to keep my fine to the minimum, then I would support those committee members that choose that route. I just got my letter about two weeks ago from the CRD, and I gotta clean my tank out in July, and that's 500 bucks, and I don't see anybody that's on sewers volunteering to help me pay for that. So I do not see it as a social program. If I found a person in the ditch that needed to be fed, that's a social program. Sewers on every street is not a social program, that is just somebody that has a desire to jam them down our throats, and it's not gonna happen in this city. The people, 80%, have the first voice, they're not here tonight, but they'll be here in November. So those that have chosen option one to minimize the effect on me, I applaud you for it, and I would hope that that carries the day. Thank you.
My name is Sharon Beach, and I work for, oh, sorry, I work for the Department of National Defense, so I'm one of the big three. And we, I'm just here to present what DND's view is on this. We obviously are in favor of option two, feel that the cost-sharing across the city is more equitable. Everybody, you know, it obviously is better for DND as well, but DND, Department of National Defense, just to clarify too, the pilt is not voluntary, it is, it's actual act where the federal departments have to pay municipalities a certain amount for municipal services that they are provided. And part of those municipal services should be sewer, roads and ground, things like that. But the pilt that we paid last year was $2,688,000 to the city of Colwood, and the year before that was $2.5 million. It's based on a mill rate, just not to get into too much detail, but it's based on a mill rate, there are, there have been disputes about the amount of pelt that we pay, but that's through Public Works and Government Services Canada. The other thing is that we've seen significant increases in our sewer fee over the years. In 2012, we paid, as you had mentioned, we paid $142,000. 2013, we paid $230,000, and if option one is the option that's decided to go with, it could see our sewer fee increase from about, to about $350,000, $400,000 per year. So that is really significant, and that's what I was brought here to do, to say. Thank you.
Coming back to committee, is there a motion, sorry, were there questions? Mayor Hamilton?
I just want to make sure that you're absolutely clear that this is a CRD originating debt for a building to process what you flush down the toilets, and we don't seem to have much of a say in that despite our strong position at the CRD board table. It seems to be overlooked. There are four directors amongst that group who feel that this is the wrong way to be going, but there is a need for strength in bringing this message. So as much as you stand before us here, giving us your feelings on behalf of DND, I would ask for your support in saying the same thing at the CRD table to all of those directors as well, because we continue the conversation there. We can't stop this process, we knew last year that this was gonna double this year, I made it loud and clear, it's going to increase because they have a need to come up with $748 million, and that is simply just building, that is not operational, that does not cost, over cost overruns of which we will all be responsible for. So there is a no end, in my opinion, but it is not the responsibility or the design of the city of Colwood in creating that. We are trying our best ability to fight that off and stave it off, and it's truly unfortunate that we see these significant increases, but again, it's not by any member of this council or administration, staffing, or anybody, it's what's being foisted upon us, and we're trying to balance it the best we can. Tomorrow morning at 9:30, but it's too late to present at that time, but I would suggest, if you want to, you know, bring a letter forward through me or directly down there, I'll help you with who to get in contact with.
Any other comments? Seeing none, does someone wanna make a, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna suggest how the motion should go, because we have rescinded a motion from...
Sure. Okay, yeah, I think we're open to your recommendation.
So what I'd recommend then, that motion three from the meeting of the 11th, 2013 meeting of council regarding CRD sewer taxing be rescinded. So what the motion was, was that the capital cost of any capacity purchased or otherwise paid for by the city in... paid for by the city in any sewage treatment system for the use of users yet to be connected to the sewer system be remitted by payment of charge as a parcel tax on the entire city calculated on the development potential in the same way as currently used in the local area service by law. So what this is saying is this is a parcel tax. We can't go down that road, so that has to be rescinded.
Okay. Someone like to make that?
So moved?
Moved by Councilor Day. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? opposed? Carried.
So the next motion then, based on just me putting something forward first, would be something to the effect that the capital cost of any capacity purchased or otherwise paid for by the city in any sewage treatment system for the use of users yet to be connected to the municipal sewer system and for which the CRD requisition must be remitted in 2013, be charged as, sorry, 2014, be charged as an assessed value tax on the entire city. So what that's saying is it's exactly the same as was done in 2013.
No, that's not. No, that's not.
Sorry.
I believe it is because he said future capacity.
There is a recommendation in there that I think that speaks to all of this, is there not?
Yeah. If we move the recommendations, as in Michael's report?
I just want to be clear before we actually make that on the table. It could be, in the recommendation, it could be one, two, so.
So Chris.
It could be all four of those so that we could see it.
So Chris, a question to you. We only rescinded part three of that previous motion.
Correct. The reason being, it's based on going to a parcel tax.
Right.
I think that means then that parts one and two still stand.
So one and two still stand?
That's correct, yes.
So we don't, so in Michael's recommendation, we don't have to repeat number one because we've already said it. We do have to repeat number two because the old number two says 2013, and we now need it to say 2014. And we do need to do the new, the new number three.
Yes, it is.
Is that correct?
I believe that's what the CIO read out with the correct date. He in fact read number two.
Okay. So for clarity, we don't have to deal with item number one because it's already there? We're looking at number two and number three?
We're not going to do three.
No, number one is still needed. Just do two.
No, what it is is that based on the meeting of March the eleventh, 2013, item one stays as is, so does item two with the date of 2013. So the recommendation for 2014 is the same as 2013, except for the date of 2014 inserted instead of 2013.
Okay. That's not very clear for me. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the recommendation on page four of five, that the Committee of the Coal recommend to council that one, two, and three. And the first part is that existing users of the municipal sewer system be charged for both the capital cost and the maintenance cost of the capacity which they will use in any sewage treatment system used by the city as a fee calculated on the same basis as sewer user fees. And two, that the capital cost of any capacity purchased or otherwise paid for by the city in any sewage treatment system for the use of users yet to be connected to the municipal sewer system for which the CRD requisitions must be remitted in 2014, be charged as an assessed value tax on the entire city. And the capital cost for any capacity purchased or otherwise paid for by the city in any sewage treatment system for the use of users yet to be connected to the municipal sewer system for which the city must remit payment in 2015 or later be charged as a parcel tax on the entire city calculated on development potential in the same way as currently used in local area service bylaws. And that staff being instructed to present, oh, actually, we've already done that part, so never mind the "and." So one, two, and three, I believe all apply.
Yeah.
So can I move the recommendations as written, one, two, and three then?
But did we rescind? I would like to make a comment before you make that motion. I think we rescinded that.
Hold on. Okay, this is, Mr. CIO, help us here.
Yeah, we did rescind motion three from the 2012 meeting staff stat. So we needed to do that. So what's on the floor now is a motion based on the report on page four of five, one, two, and three.
Okay. Before, have you officially made that motion?
No. There is discussion on the motion. There's no reason.
But we made motion, but we can't, whoa, I guess we didn't.
You can.
So we got the motion, who she's made the motion.
But just, like, I want to be, Chris has said motion three. So, Councilor Day, that means from the March eleventh, 2013 meeting, we have only rescinded section three, is my understanding, which means one and two are already there. And so if we rescind, would it be simpler and more clear if we simply rescinded all of that motion of March eleventh and replaced it with the recommendations?
I don't believe so. The reason being, I don't believe.
So because motions one and two from 2013 have already been carried out. They're complete.
But we're saying the same thing in the recommendation. It's just for cleanliness.
Yes, I see what you mean.
Is all, that's all. I mean, it's the same words. We're just cleaning. Take that one all the way, replace it with this one.
The only issue then is if we rescind, if we're going, still looking at the March eleventh, 2013, we've rescinded three.
Yep.
We're suggesting we rescind one. The problem is with two. Two was very specific to 2013. We executed that.
Okay, so we leave those ones alone. That's 2013 done then. So in actual fact, are we simplifying the recommendation to say that we continue from our practice of 2013 and changing the date to 2014?
Oh, hold on. Yeah, Councilor Sullivan?
Thank you. I just got a bit of advice that I think is really good advice. Why don't we let them stay in 2013 and just reiterate them for 2014?
Yep.
Thank you. I think we're agreed we're going with one and two. My question to this council is, do we actually not want to move the third part of that motion at this moment in time? And my reason for doing that is, we, what we're doing is providing clear direction in terms of how we want to address 2014. We don't know at this moment in time how we want to address 2015 because if all goes well, we will be in a very different situation where we're looking at not paying into the CRD liquid waste management plan. We're looking at paying towards our own system. So my suggestion is that we actually don't talk about 2015 at this moment in time until we know what 2015 looks like.
Yeah.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you. I couldn't agree more. That's why we said keep them in 2013, reiterate them for 2014. We're not talking about 15, 16, 17, or 18. So let's just keep it at 2014, and I think we're all in agreement.
So let's separate the parts of the motion and vote on them individually.
Do we have a motion over on the floor?
Yes, that's correct. But you can separate a motion?
Right.
Just so that you could vote down number three. That's the simplest way I know to do it. You can vote each one separately, and then if you want to leave 2015 till 2015, just vote against that third part.
There's no such thing.
We would be reiterating, you know, one, two, and three as 2014.
Part three is about 2015?
Change the date to 2014.
No, because part three is a parcel tax. Yeah, so it's, at least my understanding that I can't technically withdraw a motion. We can vote it down if you want, but I understood that you can separate a motion into its parts. That's my understanding of process. So I'm just suggesting that we vote separately on one, two, and three, and then we can vote down the third one that deals with a parcel tax for 2015 and leave that to be answered in 2015.
The alternative is that I make an amending motion to delete part three.
Or we can do that?
I will move that we delete part three of the motion.
All right. We're all good with that? We're allowed to do that? Blah, blah, blah. All right. I will call any discussion regarding Judith's motion. Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? opposed? Carried? Now I will move to main motion.
Main motion as amended.
As amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed?
Did you? Yeah, I put it in paper.
Okay, sorry, I thought I saw your hand move, and it was like, shocked me. Carried. It's like, do I have to recount? Because I just assumed it was going to fail. Or Pat?
I was going to fail.
Eight-thirty.
Um, is it, I think? You should have put money on it.
That's what I was trying to do, but nobody was.
I'm going to put this back on. Then, looking, so we should go back to the main issue then, which is the operating sewer operating budget. Is there any questions, comments? Councilor Day?
Thank you. Just, there was a number of documents that were distributed that we really haven't talked about. We've talked about how to pay for the sewer. We haven't really talked about what's in the budget, and I just wondered if we wanted to go through any of the other documents.
Well, I would look to staff. Staff, do you guys have any comments regarding the budget?
Well, I just wanted to point out professional fees legal. If you look at the history of that budget.
Sorry, which page?
Oh, sorry, page one of twenty. Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong tab, I think. Is that sewer?
It is, yes. Okay. If you look at that, at the bottom of one of twenty, you look at the history of that budget. For instance, 2010, it was budgeted at fifty thousand, and the spending was a hundred-and-ninety thousand. That's what we call the time of the troubles. But if you look at 2013, the legal budget was just under twenty grand, and it's been in steady decline since 2011 because we now have a time of peace in the sewers. So you could reduce the fee a little bit by reducing that legal budget if you feel confident enough to do so. I would suggest that we should feel confident enough to do it.
I would feel the exact opposite in that I think between the federal government and other things, I think there would be a lot of, I would not want to, I would look at increasing it, not decreasing it. But that's committee's, any other comments regarding that specific line, Adam? Counselor Day?
I just would suggest that we leave it as is for now, and if things are going well, hopefully, it can be reduced next year.
Sorry, I did interrupt you, City Engineer. Did you have other comments regarding outside of that line, Adam?
No, I don't think I had any other thing that needed a comment. The, there is a rather heavy maintenance cost for the Wishaw Pump Station, but I believe in the capital, you have included the replacement of the troublesome pump or pumps, and so we should be able to reduce that next year.
Mayor Hamilton?
From yesterday's conversation in the I-Lot Place Pumping Station, did we get more information on that one in regards to what that figured factor, because it would change?
Yeah, I have one made that I just wanted to do this.
For everybody's information, that is, the cost of the pump station would be a hundred-and-seventy-thousand, fifty thousand from a contribution, and a hundred-and-twenty thousand from reserves if the reserves are found to be sufficient.
Counselor Sullivan?
And if they're not found to be sufficient, then are?
It would, I guess the only other source then is the user fee, but I believe the reserves are very, very close if they're not actually sufficient.
Okay, thanks.
Why am I paying for something that I'm not using? Sorry. Any other questions? Counselor Day?
I didn't want to cut off debate. It just seemed like perhaps people were done, and I just wondered if we wanted to forward this to council with the caveat of having the I-Lot Place sewers on there?
Do we need that? I'm just, sorry, just before you make that motion.
Do we need it? Because we had that motion yesterday.
Not the same motion.
Did we not have a motion around I-Lot?
I-Lot, Matilda Pump Station was to be included in the capital.
And it was to confirm the amount of how much, and it's a hundred-and-seventy, as Michael said.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we forward this to council and request staff to look into the amount for the I-Lot Place sewers.
Any discussion?
It's okay, we'll.
Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? opposed? Carried? Oh, shoot. No, no, we had public input. Oh, no, we didn't. No, 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 they were talking specifically about the, we'll still let you, did you have additional? Because, yeah, well, public, anybody in public, because when you stood up to speak, you were speaking about option one or option two on billing, but did you have any comments around the specific budget that you would like?
Oh, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Dwyer. Moving on to 4.6, finance fiscal. Oh, now we've got to give them a per diem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Finance budget is fairly straightforward. The biggest change probably from previous years is that we have all financial services within this budget, but the actual finance department budget is very little change. We've managed to reduce our overtime significantly thanks to the approval of the new position last year, so we have been able to reduce our budget. The only real, obvious change from 2014 to 2015 is a drop in general expenses, and this relates solely to some education and training from one of our staff is going to be completed in 2014. be completed in 2014, so we no longer need those monies going forward.
Questions, comments from committee? Counselor Lucans?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, and then Counselor McEnton?
Just a question with respect, page one of nine, the donation for the crossing guards. I know that our previous contributor has declined to contribute this year, so I'm just wondering where we're at with that, and I'm just wondering if once again a request can be made to the union to contribute any monies towards that position.
Yes, we were denied the funding from Shaw, I believe, so at this point we could look at that as a potential source for the $7,000 contribution.
Have we gone out to ask or request monies from any other company or persons or anybody to assist with that, or what are we doing about it?
To my knowledge, last year we approached Shaw because they had in the past contributed the $7,000 necessary, and by the time we received the rejection in 2013, it was too late. So we're in a new year, we've lost that $7,000 for last year, so it would have to be absorbed. But in 2014, we'll be able to look at other options.
Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. I'm looking at the salary and benefits line, so it's page two of three of the handout that we got tonight, and there's a, an increase of $40,000 plus between 2013 and 2014, and that carries through to 2015, which I assume reflects the additional position that we approved last night. My question then is, why doesn't it then reduce in 2016 when we no longer have that position?
Actually, this does not include the position that we discussed last evening. It includes the new position, the senior, well, not the senior, we would call accountant, but she's the benefits supervisor, basically. That position was approved in last year's budget, so these figures reflect a full year of that position. So the position for IT that we've asked for would be separate.
Okay, so that's not reflected in here. Thanks.
Counselor Lucans?
Just a question, back to the IT piece that I know is a position you've asked, requested as of yesterday to committee. Do we have a contract with Langford? Are we going to be paying double with Langford? And if Denny's covering off some of the IT stuff, I'm just trying to get an understanding of that.
We won't be paying double because we don't currently have anyone that is doing the kind of work that we're proposing that Denny would do. And yes, we do have a contract with the City of Langford. We do have an out clause with it, and it is our hope that eventually we won't have to pay it because it's such a significant cost to the city. I think I mentioned yesterday that the base alone is $48,000, plus they also charge us for the West Shore detachment, our CMP, for their IT costs. We also are charged through our WSPR requisition for IT costs as well. And in addition to that, every time we add software, they tack on an annual support cost, which is about, over, well over $100,000, pushing $150,000. And the support that we get for the software is virtually non-existent.
Just to follow up on that, I guess where I'm going with this is, when does the contract end with Langford? If there's not duplication in what Denny's doing and what they're doing, are we able to get out of the contract and save those monies and basically fund the position that you're requesting for Denny? And he could pick up whatever they're doing, because, you know, this discussion still needs to happen at council. You know, if we're bringing IT back in house, when can we do it? That's not going to impact us so much. When does the contract end in Langford? And can those cost savings fund this position? We need to start to find some efficiencies.
Yes, I agree. We have to give Langford one year's notice to get out of the contract if it's before the final year of the contract, which I think is 2015. I think we signed that in 2010, and it's a five-year agreement. In the last year of the agreement, we only have to give them six months' notice that we're going to get out. And based on my own past experience with reorganizing IT, I'm very confident that the city will realize significant savings by not only having someone in-house to look after the software and training, but also to have the ongoing support and maintenance of the overall computer system for the city. My last community, we saved over $105,000 a year, very small community.
Sorry, is that a follow-up or a different question?
Follow-up.
Taking your head to both.
Sorry.
Okay, I'll let you do your follow-up, and then Mayor Hamilton.
Just with respect to Denny's position, then, would he only be doing the IT for finance, or would it be for the entire city?
Yeah, it's for the entire city. It's, every department has different software projects that they have either on the go or they want to implement, and, but we don't have a, like, a cheerleader for that to follow it from start to finish, and know that he's already begun to work with planning department on getting the SharePoint finally installed and operating.
Mayor Hamilton, then Counselor Day?
Thank you. I think that that contract might have been signed in November, December of 2011, just at the end of previous council. Five years, as I recall that it is, but my question around things is, there's one part about IT, but that cost and contract is about the server hosting component as well. So there may be a continued cost somewhere, because we don't serve, we don't host our own, we don't have the equipment to bring a server into our, and so that would be another huge budget, because I think the last, when I did admin before, that was about a $300,000 cost to bring in a server system here, which is why we went out for that component. So it's quite expensive, and then there's the maintenance and upgrades and that sort of thing that have to be continually fought on that. So make sure that we're dissecting that and understanding the full components of it.
Counselor Day, then Counselor Sullivan? Oh, sorry, you have a question?
Yeah, I think that is extremely high. You can buy a very good server processor for about $10,000, so I am quite confident that between Denny and I, that when we get to that point, we'll be able to find the most economical solution. I won't be paying anybody $300 grand for a server.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I've also been approached at the West Shore Chamber of Commerce by a number of local service providers who would like an opportunity to bid on any services that are needed by the city, so if there is hosting services required, there certainly are a lot of businesses in our community.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our contract with the City of Langford includes IT services for the City of Callwood, but it also includes services for West Shore Parks and Rec and the RCMP, doesn't it?
Yes, it does, and WSPR is planning to get out of their agreement with Langford. Last time I spoke with Sue Dixon, that's what she told me.
Okay, so it's a separate contract with the RCMP and a separate contract with West Shore Parks and Rec?
Yes, they have individual contracts with all of us.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was all included in one. No, okay.
Any other questions, comments regarding finance? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, I'm getting sleepy. Public?
I just want to go back on the issue of the crossing guards, because I, we've been talking about this for two or three years now, where the goal was to try and get the business community involved in possibly having some type of sponsorship advertising at the crossing guards to bring some revenue in to reduce this debt to the city. I think this would be a perfect time to approach the Chamber of Commerce and say, with all your avenues to the local businesses, could you not set up a program of sponsorship that would bring money in to take care of this debt? Instead of us trying to find business people willing to do it, the Chamber of Commerce is in the position of being able to influence its membership to possibly taking on sponsorships at the various crosswalks, and then we wouldn't have to try and approach people for handouts. So it is good that we have this, that we're willing to pay for this right now, because we don't want to see the crossing guards not be there, but I think at the same time, the last couple of years, the discussion was to try and find outside support, and that's my thought. I think we should continue that avenue, and possibly the Chamber of Commerce can be the ones that we approach. Thanks.
I'll agree with that statement. He didn't listen either, he's ignoring me as well. Do we have any other motions or any motions regarding finance?
I can make the motion that the finance budget presented to committee be forwarded to council for approval.
Any discussion? Counselor Day?
Just, will we see that new position added in there when it comes to council?
No, we generally keep the special projects separate from the core budget until it's actually been adopted by council.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lucans?
Just one final question, taking off of what Counselor Day was asking with respect to the position, is, I guess, is it a one-year contract? Because I recall yesterday we had to make it a union position or whatever, because what is the issue at the end of the term, being one year, that if whoever's on council at that point in time decides that they don't want to continue it, or maybe they do, but are there issues with the union in severing that position if it's a union position for that one year?
I wouldn't think so, because it would be an auxiliary position and with a start and end date.
Okay, so can we just double-check that, just to make sure we've got our i's dotted and our t's crossed, so that there's not any issues? Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Next meeting, when do we need our next meeting? I don't know if we need another committee of the whole meeting. Yep.
Been deferred, so until those are resolved, but we also...
Do we have a tentative date that we were thinking?
Well, there's a tentative date for tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting, but I'm not sure if everything can be assembled, including all the minutes that have to be transcribed.
So do you want me to leave it open, or do you, do we have, have you guys had a discussion on when you would like to do the next one?
I don't know, maybe the Director of Finance might have a comment.
Yeah, I, we do have a meeting tentatively scheduled for tomorrow, but if the administrative side of these meetings is going to be too much of a burden, then we can reschedule, I guess, to a date that is suitable for committee.
Well, actually, I'm just going to stop for a sec, and do we need the minutes that you're talking about? I understand that those minutes should go to council. We don't need them for committee of the whole, do we? So administration really shouldn't be slowing us down on that side of it, should it?
Well, the thing is, there's an issue with, number one, getting them ready, and then the minute, the agenda for the council meeting has to go out by late Thursday, that's, you know, a day and a half away, so I'm not sure if we can make that quick enough.
Okay. Counselor Day?
I just was going to suggest that we schedule like a 6:00 committee of the whole for next Monday, just prior to council. That way we would be able to do all of everything, and I think the agenda won't be too horribly long, because I was talking about agendas and where things should go today, so it might be a council meeting that's not so long, so we could accommodate some time for committee of the whole as well.
I think that that would probably work quite well, plus it'd also give council an indicator in terms of what we're looking for as a total lift to this, this point in time, so at least you can then give direction to staff if you're satisfied with that or you want some changes to it. At the moment, I don't know.
I think it's fairly small if it's there at all.
Well, there's a way to do it, providing all the information is available, it can be an agenda item already there, and we fill it in as we go. However, it is making it rather compacted, and we, you know...
We're in no hurry to pass budget. Yeah, there's no rush. We've got lots of time. Before we adjourn, though, I just, it just popped into my mind, we were talking about this earlier today, Chris, was having to approve or recommend the approval of the West Shore Park and Rec budget to, because it needs to go to council.
That's right.
And we didn't see it, though, did we?
No, that's the problem, and maybe what we'll do is we'll put it on the agenda for the council meeting, so it can be approved, because it's got to be approved before the 28th of January.
Yep. All right. So what, looking at the Director of Finance, what's, what's your will on when you would like to have the next committee of the whole for budget?
I thought we, are we meeting on Monday at 6?
No.
No, okay.
Well, no, my understanding, well, we're not meeting at 6 to deal if we're trying to get it into the 7:00 meeting. We can meet at 6. We just, the 6:00 information can't get into the 7:00 council meeting. That's the only thing I'm saying there. All right, well, I will let you comment, I promise. Okay, Counselor Sullivan?
Oh, thank you. I think it's important for us to keep in mind, maybe Monday's a little too quick, but we don't, you know, when I hear comments like, you know, we have all, we've got lots of time, we've got lots of time, got to remember, though, that we can't start any major capital projects until the budget's approved, and in prior years, if we don't approve to May 15th, that's halfway through the year, almost halfway through the year, and we can't get the projects completed. So I just caution, you know, maybe Monday won't work logistically, but let's not just keep saying we've got lots of time.
Okay. Mayor Hamilton?
Aren't we under still a bit of a weight, because our budget has to be submitted and approved to higher authorities before we move on things, unless we give special prior authorization?
In terms of, the council can approve any project before the budget's approval by just giving early approval, so if they're capital projects, they can come forward immediately.
Counselor Day?
Thanks. The only reason I was suggesting Monday was not necessarily because anything needs to be rushed, but because we probably have a lighter agenda, and we're going to be here on that night, and staff is going to be here on that night, so it was just to be efficient. So anything that's not ready or that feels rushed, I'm not suggesting we hurry it, I'm just suggesting that if we have some things ready, for example, maybe yesterday's minutes are going to be ready, but today's minutes aren't, that would be one thing out of the way. And I just want to make use of the time.
All right, I'm going back to staff. All right, I'm going back to staff. Staff, when do you guys want to meet? You've heard comments from council or committee, excuse me.
I would love to meet next Monday at six o'clock.
All right. All right, so we will tentatively, meeting will be scheduled for Monday, January thirteenth, thank you, at six P.M.
And what's the expectation for committee or for staff to have at that meeting, then?
I have no expectation. Yeah, Counselor Day?
Just, I think the things that we've asked for, if there's something that they can't get for us, they'll tell us that there's a delay, we can't get that for you yet, and if they can, they'll have it for us, and we'll move ahead.
So the action items that we identified throughout the committee of the whole budget process, I just want to make sure that they're clear. It's not the meeting minutes that we need at that meeting, you know, whatever, so, okay? You good, boss?
All right. Looking for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Carried.
Your motion to adjourn to the...
Yeah, right. Oh, God, that's already that time.